Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, April 20th, and we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Jones.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Great. Thank you so much. Next, we will have department updates and we'll begin with Ms. Cottle, who's here in person. So great to see you.
Do we get to clap?
I think I have it on.
I know.
I know. I told my staff, I said, I'm actually going to the courthouse for the commissioners meeting today. Yay. These updates will be pretty quick this morning. We do remain in a low community level. Numbers are increasing a little bit in, in the county and in the state, but not in a significant amount. So that's good news. We are watching that. But more importantly, the hospitalizations are remaining low and we're not seeing deaths at this time. So those are the two most important things right now. But just remember to, you know, consider your own risks and your concerns and act accordingly. And hopefully, we will continue to move forward through this. The Indiana Department of Health is continuing to make changes to the dashboard. More are coming next week. Seems like we've been through this. We know change is the one thing that just keeps happening. But they are adding some new things to that. And one of the things that I'm anxious to see is really be able to see a county map page. So you can kind of drill down and see what those numbers are for each county. So hopefully, that would be a little bit easier for people to see some of the local data that they want to see. So we're excited about that. It will also include kind of vaccination categories. We've talked about this in the past. But what does it mean to be partially vaccinated? You've had one shot perhaps of a two-dose mRNA vaccine, but you haven't completed it. Are you fully vaccinated? You've had one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson or two doses of Pfizer or Moderna? And then are you up to date? So you've been fully vaccinated and you have had your recommended boosters. So that would be there just again as information to individuals. I think everybody is probably aware that there was a federal judge who did overturn the public transportation mask requirement. So at least at this moment, that's not a federal requirement. And I will say again, businesses, including transportation, can require them if they choose to do so. So have your mask available doesn't mean that you're not going to have to wear it in some places. I know some airports are, are continuing to require them. So you may not have to wear it on the plane, but you may have to wear it in the airport. So remember and keep that in mind. And then the federal health emergency declaration was extended into mid-July. So those are my updates for today.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
What, what's the variant that's causing the surge in the Philadelphia area? Do you know?
I, it's still, the B2 is, there is a subvariant of that that's now starting to be seen as well. But it's still Omicron that we're releasing.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No, just thank you. Thank you for somewhat good news.
Yeah, we hope it will continue to improve.
Yeah, we do as well and appreciate you being here again, but it's nice to see you in person.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Excellent. Are there any other departments that have an update to offer? Either come to the podium or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. This agenda item is for public comment for items that are not on our agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. You will hear at 2 minutes and 30 seconds a tone. Thank you, TSD. When you hear that tone, that means you have 30 seconds to wrap up your comment. Does anybody in the Nat U Hill room have public comment for items not on our agenda? And it looks like we have a commenter on Zoom. Jim Shelton, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton with the chamber, but speaking at the moment on behalf of CASA's court-appointed special advocates. Want to update you and the public to know that we have some 54 children right now who need someone to volunteer to serve as their advocate while they're in the court system because their parents have abused or neglected them. The next training session will start June 6th and runs pretty much through the month of June. So applications will be due in just about a month from now. So I want to make sure everybody knows that. I'm sure there are people who are considering if this is a volunteer opportunity for them or not. It'd be a good time to do that. We do, as I say, have 54 children waiting for a CASA to be appointed for them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Shelton. It looks like we don't have any other commenters, so we will move on to our next agenda items.
Move approval of the minutes from April 13th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits?
No.
All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes from April 13th, 2022 signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable, April 20th, 2022, and payroll, April 22nd, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Miller here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was $3,024,571.90. I'll focus on the top four claim items that total just shy of 80% of that total figure. The first was $1,464,874.64 for Monroe County Treasure. That was for full-time self-insurance, both quarterly and monthly. $362,357.48 was for Anthem Inc. for April claims and stop-loss premium. $323,327.41 was for food and beverage tax distribution for March. And $242,790.83 was for the City of Bloomington for the Public Safety Answering Point Local Income Tax to the City for Central Dispatch. The total for payroll was $1,823,326.84. 70.8% were for the payroll direct costs, and the remaining 29.2% were for the payroll-related AP claim items.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item, either here in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand on the Zoom screen? All right, seeing none, we'll come back for a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the claims docket accounts payable, April 20th, and payroll, April 22nd, 2022 signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will note for the record that we have received a report from the Treasurer. It is the March 2022 report. We will move on now to new business, please.
Move approval of Walmart Community Grant for Emergency Management. Fund name: Radio and CD Sirens. Fund number: 1000-3505.000.0361. The grant amount is $500.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. We have Mr. Baker here to tell us about it, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Justin Baker. I'm from Emergency Management. Last month, we applied for a grant with the Walmart Community Grant with the local Walmart. We were awarded $500 for it. We will be using this to help with the sirens. And we'll seek more funding for the sirens.
Excellent. That's really good news. Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
This is the first time I remember us getting something like this. This is nice. Very nice work.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I was just wondering how much the cost is of a single siren.
Oh, you have to be at the podium. Thank you.
To place a siren, like complete siren, it would be like $20,000.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, either here in the Nat U Hill room. Please come to the podium or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. All right, seeing none, we'll come back for a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the Walmart Community Grant for Emergency Management signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Resolution 2022-16, Surplus Property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Crone here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. What I have for you this morning is a request to approve a declaration of surplus items that we've gathered from multiple departments around the county. The list includes some vehicles from Highway Department, some small equipment, as well as a paver, some signage equipment that they also had, and a lot of this broken up and incomplete furniture. So there are items that will be auctioned. The broken and incomplete furniture items will be sold for scrap value.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Now it's nice that we'll get any money back from these things.
Well, actually, the price of steel is up so high, even a couple of desks will bring $50, $60 just for a couple of beds. And we have a lot of it. So that just gives you an idea of what we can pull in from that.
Wow. Excellent. Commissioner Jones?
No, thank you.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, either here in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. All right, seeing none, we'll come back for a voice vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2022-16 signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Indiana Department of Health Grant. Fund name: Annual Survey. Fund number: 8114, in an amount of $1,000.
We have a motion.
Oh, second, sorry.
That's okay. We have a motion and we have a second, and Ms. Cottle is here to tell us all about it.
Certainly. So every year, we are required to do an annual report and submit that to the Indiana Department of Health. And over the last few years, they have moved to a survey format. So that's normal behavior for us to fill that out. But this year, they are actually awarding health departments $1,000 for completing that survey and doing our annual report to them. So we are pleased to get that $1,000. There are no stipulations, so we'll be able to use that. Really, I would say for kind of some staff, and maybe we haven't decided completely, maybe our staff retreat to bring that back. Or some sort of more fun thing that we can do to say that we have made it two years plus. So no stipulations really on how we use it. So a lot of times grants and things, you can't buy food, so we could bring in a meal for staff or something like that. So this $1,000 is for that.
Excellent. Great. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
I hope you all enjoy yourselves.
We'll figure out something fun, right? A good meal or something.
Nice. Good. Well deserved. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, either here in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. All right, seeing none, we'll come back for a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the Indiana Department of Health Grant signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Excellent. Thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Memorandum of Understanding with Bloomington Montessori and Covenant Christian Schools. Fund name: Crisis Coag supplemental workforce. Fund number: 8111, in an amount of $23,461.15.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Please tell us all about this one.
Yes, so these memorandum of agreements are with the schools. And as you know, we got the coag grants for schools. So kind of COVID money to help schools, the health department receive those funds. And we wanted just to get the bulk of those funds directly into the school's hands. So we have worked with the legal department. We've been working for some time to get these all lined out and have offered these MOAs with the various schools. So they do have to attest to following the local, state, and federal regulations during the grant cycle, which was actually July of last year through June of this year. And then there are some deliverables. So there's a school assessment, there's a liaison, they're meeting certain deliverables. And these will be paid out in three installments as they meet those deliverables, which is also how we're getting the funds to us. The first two schools are Montessori and Covenant Christian to submit their signed MOUs and attestations. And we've divided the funding, every, the schools all have a minimum, a base amount, and then it's based on population. So that is how we determined how much each school will get.
Excellent. You answered my question. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Not it. Not with that explanation. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment here in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. All right, seeing none, we'll come back for a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the MOU with Bloomington Montessori and Covenant Christian Schools signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. It's a great initiative. Thank you. Next item.
Move approval of Storage Express Rental Agreement. Fund name: Public Health Emergency Preparedness. Fund number: 8104, in an amount not to exceed $3,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Please tell us all about it.
Yes, I mentioned this last week during work session. We have a lot of PPE and things that we, from our testing sites and vaccine clinics, that we need a place to store safely for a period of time. And in terms of planning for what happens if we have another surge, that kind of thing, we want to make sure that we have some supplies already handy and that we don't have to scurry to try to find those. So this is really just to provide adequate, safe, temperature-controlled storage for us that we have easy access to. And so the, again, I think legal for looking over the, the agreement, and it is ready to go if you approve it.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
It seems like a much better idea to store things off-site, given the limited amount of space that we do have in county buildings. So I appreciate the effort.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I appreciate that we'll have all of that equipment ready should we need it again.
Yes, and this is being paid with the grant funds from preparedness.
Yeah, makes sense. Lots of sense. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, either here in the Nat U Hill room or you may raise your hand on the Zoom screen to be recognized. All right, seeing none, we'll come back for a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the Storage Express Rental Agreement signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of Allied Holdings Group LLC Hazardous Waste Disposal Agreement. Fund name: Futures and TAF. Fund number: 8126 and 8150, in an amount of $125 per month.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Please tell us all about this one.
So in our futures clinic, as well as in our harm reduction program, we do collect sharps and medical waste. So we have to have a facility come and dispose of that for us. And we have used a company that we have actually cost more, so this was less money. And they're actually going to buy out the remainder of that contract for this. So again, legal looked over it. The addendum that you see was the additional items that legal department said we needed. And I thank them again for that. And so this will just be able to change that contract over.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I'm really pleased that, that we're able to do this all around the county. And in fact, there are times when I know one of your staff goes out and hands out little miniature disposal things for people to use. And so very nice work.
Yeah, excellent. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I was just curious if you happen to know where and how Allied Health disposes of these things.
Well, I don't know the answer to that. You know, I, there are certainly regulations around that and so, but I don't have the details about that for them.
That's not surprising.
Is there any public comment on this item, either here in the Nat U Hill room or you may raise your hand on the Zoom screen? I will note that this is an important part of public health, so I appreciate the effort that's gone into this. We don't see any commenters, so with that, we'll come back for a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement with Allied Holdings Group LLC signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of Sophia Travis Community Service Grants Amendment for the Health Department. Fund name: County General. Fund number: 1,000, in an amount remaining $685.58.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Shell here from the council to tell us all about it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Health Department received a Sophia Travis grant back in 2020. They have a year to use those funds up, which is, which ended December 21st of 2021. But due to the pandemic and everything going on, they were not able to utilize their entire grant amount. And so the Sophia Travis Committee, along with the council, has granted an extension for the Health Department, and it's a six-month extension, which was, would end October the 12th of this year. And that should give the Health Department plenty of time to use up the remaining of that amount.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I'm happy that we have sharps, disposals, containers around the community.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is definitely a good thing. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Appreciate the Health Department's work on this, too. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, either here in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Seeing none, we'll come back for a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the Sophia Travis Community Service Grants Amendment for the Health Department signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take items H-I-N-G together, please.
Okay, I hope I get this right. Move approval of MOU with Core Correctional Solutions. Move approval, and that amount will be not to exceed $64,500. Move approval of MOU with Justice Systems Partners in an amount not to exceed $25,000. And an MOU with the Carey Group in an amount not to exceed $15,500. All of these are with fund name: Reducing Revocations Challenge, and fund number: 4913.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Who's here to present this today? Ah, there he is. Okay, excellent. TSD, if you could add Mr. Hatfield as a presenter. Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Miller. There you are. Good morning. Tell us about all three of these.
Hi, Commissioners. Troy Hatfield, Deputy Chief Probation Officer, and I apologize for not being in person. I somehow got myself double booked this morning. So a couple of weeks ago, I came to with a subaward contract with IU for a grant that we received from Arnold Ventures. And this project surrounds our work towards trying to reduce probation revocations and create better success for people that we serve, our clients that are under community supervision. So part of that grant revolves around a couple of strategies that we are putting in place to create some better success. These MOUs, at least two of the three, the one with the Carey Group and the other one with Core Correctional Solutions, are going to provide training to our staff, and pretty intensive training. Core Correctional Solution is going to spend about three weeks with us, training all of our staff in a lot of skills and interventions that we believe will be a lot, a very successful with our clients. And then Carey Group is going to come in and really talk to us a lot about effective case planning and building success plans for our clients to work with them. And the final MOU is with Justice System Partners, and they're going to help us out in terms of looking at our standard conditions of probation, kind of looking at ways that we might want to consider revising those from a race equity lens, as well as a lens that might provide some greater opportunities for our clients on, on community supervision to, again, increase the number of people that complete successfully, decrease the number of people that experience incarceration in jail, in our local jail and in prison, and hopefully, you know, bring about some greater public safety and, and reduce harm in our community. So with that, it's hopeful that you would support these three MOUs that we have in front of you and so that we can kind of move forward with this work. All of this money, all of these services will be paid 100% from grant funding from that grant.
Excellent. Thank you so much. This is great. It's exciting to see this. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I want to remind the public that this was phase two of this whole grant cycle and that Monroe County with IU is one of only five locations throughout the country who receive this kind of grant money. I also think that it's really important to understand how individualized it looks like this is going to make things. And hopefully, that'll reduce not only the probation issues, but recidivism.
Yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
Well, anything that helps us keep the population of the jail down is definitely a good thing. So thank you for doing this.
Yeah, I, I just find this really intriguing and exciting for Monroe County and for our residents. I, I'm just really excited about this. I think this is just such a great initiative and these different, these different aspects of this phase are, work together really well. So excellent work, you and your staff. So thank you. So let's see if there's any public comment on this item. I can't see the participant screen. TSD has opened a widget bar of some sort. So if there's somebody raising their hand, I cannot see it. Thank you, Mr. Miller. All right. So anyone here in the Nat U Hill room have any comments? Excellent. So with that, we'll come back for a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the three MOUs with Core Correctional Solutions, Justice Systems Partners, and the Carey Group signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Emerald Grading and Seeding Inc. Fund name: Stormwater. Fund number: 1197, in an amount of $3,172.40 per mile.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and Ms. Ridge is here to tell us all about it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we presented this item to the Stormwater Board on April 13th and was approved to move forward. This is a procedure that we're going to try after we do complete ditching work along the county roads. Sometimes it can leave, leave an area looking very disturbed and not very appealing in some areas where the grass doesn't grow very well. So this is to help that process for, to help control the erosion problems that might exist after ditching.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
This would help to prevent future erosion as well. So this is good.
Commissioner Jones?
When they say hydroseeding, does that just mean putting the seed down with water? Or I'm sorry.
I've only seen Jason Moore, our Stormwater Crew Supervisor, did a lot of the work into this. And Toby Turner at the Highway Garage, they looked into the process, met with some companies, and went over the process of putting it down. The way I could see the pictures, that was more of like a bedding to put down and hydroseeding it. Yeah. So that's kind of what I got out of the procedure.
Okay, I wondered if.
I'll know more after we watch it, after I watch it.
Thank you.
We look forward to a report.
Maybe a video.
You guys always throw me for a loop. I think I'm prepared.
We actually have an internal vet going to see who can stump. And Ms. Jones wins. All right. So this is an excellent idea. Save some, save some time for our crews. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, either here in the Nat U Hill Room or via Zoom, if you'd raise your hand, please. We can recognize you. All right, seeing none, we'll come back for a voice vote. All those in favor of the agreement with Emerald Grading, Emerald Grading and Seeding Inc. signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of USI Consultants On-Call Agreement Task One. Fund name, Local Road and Street, Fund Number 1169, and an amount of $32,000.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge, please tell us all about it.
So we have looked, we do an annual crash report, a three-year crash report, and then we take that report and we look at the areas that give us concern to make improvements for the traveling motorists. So Dillon Road and Old State Road 37 South has kind of stood out to us. We've done different improvements to that area of rumble strips, additional signage. We have a flashing beacon sign there or overhead signal there. So we want to take the next step and do an analysis, which would include traffic data collection, crash analysis, geometric alternatives, and different design criteria. So this is the beginning process of helping to improve that intersection in the future.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I know that having gone down that road and often enough you come up over a hill and suddenly you're at that intersection. It feels dangerous every time I drive through there.
Yeah, and there's a lot of truck traffic that goes through there that cut through, that uses as a cut through to cross 37 and I-69. We just feel like we've, we've kind of reached our peak of what we can do to make that improvement without doing a major improvement. It's also within the MPO area. So we would want to seek out maybe it's highway safety improvement funds. It's called H-SIP funds, and that can be a 90-10 match. So it's kind of in the direction that we want to kind of take to, but you have to start that design work and that scope first.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
So I think, so this data would be helpful to bring to the MPO. Right? So that's why we're collecting the data, right?
Yeah, and it's out to, I think we put it into the 2026 MPO tip. So we want to have some more data so that we can hopefully secure funding in the future for that project. And it's very competitive money, trying to sort out the funds between City, Elletsville, IU Transit. So we just want to try and get, get a project in there so we can secure maybe some funding for it.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any comments from the public in the Nat U Hill Room? Please come to the podium. Or on the Zoom screen, if you would raise your hand, please. We recognize. Right, seeing none. We'll come back for a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement with USI Consultants On-Call Agreement Task One signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of Abram Moss Design Group LLC. Fund name, Stormwater, Fund Number 1197, and an amount of $13,000.
We have a motion and we have a second. There we go. Ms. Ridge, tell us all about this, please.
So this is for drainage analysis and design for a drainage project at State Road 45, Heinz Road and Birch Road intersection. Of course, we'll have to coordinate this with NDOT. Kelsey Thetonia has worked with this group, and we presented it to the Stormwater Board on April 13th, and it was unanimously approved to move forward.
We were witness to that. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, like you said, we, we saw it last week.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just happened to have had someone complaining to me about this intersection yesterday, so I was pleased to see it on the agenda.
Excellent. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Either come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room or raise your hand on the Zoom screen, please. All right, seeing none, we'll come back for a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the Abram Moss Design Group LLC agreement signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. And we will move on then to our next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2022-04 Sample Road Rezone.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. T S D, could we bring over? Oh, there he is. Great. Mr. Myers from Planning. Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me all right?
I sure can.
Okay, great. All right. So this is Ordinance 2022-04, also known as R E D-21-7. It's the 440 East Sample Road Rezone from Agricultural Reserve to General Business. It's a one-acre parcel, or excuse me, one parcel at 1.647 acres in Washington Township, Section 34. It's at 440 East Sample Road. All right. The purpose of the rezone request is to amend the zoning map from Agricultural Reserve to General Business. If the rezone request is approved, the petitioner intends to file a commercial site plan, the planning department, in order to receive approval for the construction of a Dollar General store. Typically, commercial site plan review is completed on a staff level. All applicable site planning requirements, including but not limited to grading, parking, landscaping, lighting, and signage, must be met by the proposed development. The petitioner does not perceive the need for any additional variance petitions regarding the proposed development at this time. And planning staff had the petitioner submit a use determination in which the described use of the petitioner fit under grocery store, which is only permitted in the general business zoning district with the following condition. The use is prohibited in the area within 500 feet, measured perpendicularly from the nearest lane of traffic along State Road 37. So that one does not apply here. And we also have the definition of convenience store here listed as well. And there has been some discussion about what the proposed use would truly be defined as. And given the size of the structure, which is 10,000 square feet or more, and given the array of items that will be sold at the store, planning staff felt grocery store fit the project the best. Okay, so this went through several different committee meetings. The Plan Review Committee met on November 10th. And they discussed the applicability of this reason request to Monroe County Comprehensive Plan. That meeting, the committee voted to, for the petition with a negative recommendation with regard to how the incompatibility with Monroe County Comprehensive Plan. And then the Plan Commission heard this petition several times as well. So they heard it first in December as the preliminary meeting, and then heard it again in January and February of this year and discussed it in more detail. So essentially, what came through from the Plan Commission was a vote of 6 to 3 to forward the petition to the county commissioners with a positive recommendation with the following conditions. And those conditions here are listed below. Number one, the written commitment says authored by the petitioner and included in the Plan Commission staff report be recorded. And two, that a pole sign be prohibited at this location, and that a monument-style sign be selected. Okay, so continuing on this presentation, we have the location map. Here is Sample Road, West Sample Road going west and East Sample Road going east. This is I-69 slash Indiana 37. Here we have the current zoning map as well as the comprehensive plan map. You'll note the current zoning is Agricultural Reserve, but there is some nearby zones designated as limited business. Some of these areas, some of these parcels, I should say, were actually taken up via the State Department for the expansion of I-69. So some of these parcels that are currently zoned as limited business are actually now state-owned. And there are a few different types of businesses and vacant businesses along what, I believe it's Wayport Road coming south here. And those are all zoned and limited business. Over here, we have the comprehensive plan map. Comprehensive plan designates this area as rural residential. We have some comments from the Stormwater and Highway Department. Essentially, most of these comments would be applicable during the site plan review stage and not typically the rezone. We can come back to these if we'd like. Here we have some aerial imagery of the petition site. This one on the top left of your screen is from the view from the south. And then the bottom right is the view from the north. You can see the road improvements here along East Sample Road. They kind of taper off right at the end of the property. The fact that these road improvements and the road is widened here are because they're existent. There has been a decent amount of discussion from the different committees about how that feeds into the suitability of development here on this site because the road improvement is already there. Here we have some additional photographs, street views of the property. Their slopes are not of an issue. There are no car features on the property, and it is not designated flood plain. Okay, here we have the petitioner's letter to the Plan Commission and County Commissioners stating that their intent is to develop the site to, and construct a 10,640-square-foot building for commercial use as a Dollar General store. And I have a little bit more explanation here as to why they've selected this site. Here we have their proposed site plan. And then on the next screen, I have it zoomed in a little bit more so we can see more detail. This is just a draft, but it is kind of a helpful tool to kind of visualize what it would be like if this were to proceed through. So this is something that planning staff would review on an administrative level. Maybe we would check parking, all those other standards I had mentioned earlier about a commercial site plan. This item here is an exhibit that was provided by the petitioner. This is a location of all the Dollar General stores or future Dollar General stores that will be operating or are currently operating on septic system. Because the site is, cannot be serviced by sewer, and given its size, there was some, a decent amount of conversation regarding the suitability for a septic system, a commercial septic system on this site. So through that conversation, the petitioner provided this list of locations where Dollar Generals were either operating with septic or were about to operate with septic. You'll note that most of these are in Indiana, and there's a few Kentucky locations as well. During the work session of the county commissioners, some of the commissioners stated that they were curious about a soil test. So this was heard, I believe, back in March or late February. I cannot remember the exact date during the work session. But the petitioner heard that request and took it upon themselves to complete their soil test and had provided this documentation for this meeting. So we have some information here regarding the soil site and its suitability. And I can just kind of scroll through these. If we have any questions about them, three different soil borings were taken. And some information was collected regarding the soil suitability for the site. Here are the locations of the borings, and then another picture here that shows where they were at. Okay, some, a few more exhibits here to kind of wrap it up. This is a image of a Google search that was provided by county planning staff. I simply just searched for grocery store in the area of this site. The Yellow Diamond is the petition site. And then, as you can see, all around the screen here are different locations that came up through that search of grocery store. So you'll know we have Southern Circle Pays, as well as another Dollar General out on 46. And then also some locations in the city of Bloomington, and then a few locations up northwest. There's another Dollar General and some other, other locations that may not be technically a grocery store, but at least do sell some sort of produce or product. I also did a search for convenience stores. So this one is what came up for convenience stores. You'll note that gas stations came up for these locations as well. Again, the Yellow Diamond is the petition site. All right, I also included the list of permitted uses in the general business zone. So you can see that this is a rather lengthy list. And then there was some conversation between Plan Commission and the petitioner regarding, you know, how lengthy this list is and maybe limiting it down. So the petitioner provided their own conditions of approval in a written commitment style letter that basically entails that they will be limiting the use of the site, even though it's general business, to a more limited business type style, and it would be the grocery store. And here's that letter here. Again, here's that, that item that I just spoke about. Any use other than the proposed by the petitioner, if not a grocery store, would then be governed by and subject to the permitted uses allowed for the limited business district and not the general business district from Monroe County's zoning ordinance. All right, so to wrap things up, planning staff has maintained the recommendation of denial for the rezone request from Agricultural Reserve to General Business based on the findings of fact, specifically findings A, B, C, and E. And there has been communication back and forth between the Plan Commission, the petitioner, and planning staff. I'm sure the petitioner will have some time and some notes to talk about to you this morning. And yes, so the Plan Commission again voted 63 for this with a positive recommendation. And the Plan Review Committee had voted 4 to 0 to forward it with a negative recommendation. I will now take in questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Myers. Let's see if there's any questions for staff. Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
I take it a Dollar Store is not really a grocery store. I've never been in one.
Yeah, so there the number of items and the array of items that are sold at Dollar Generals, and the petitioner could speak more to this, varies significantly, not significantly, but varies fairly substantially between location and location. It all depends on, you know, market metrics, I imagine, and other things that determine what kinds of products they'll be selling at the store. I will note one additional thing. Before this meeting, I believe it was last week or the week before, we did start to receive some calls from neighbors. So I'm not sure if anyone is attending this meeting in person or if they are on the Zoom call. But they did state that they would want to attend and voice their concerns for the petition. To date, we have not received any formal letters of opposition or support from the public.
So, so I have, I have two questions for you. First is, the Exhibit 6 is missing, and I don't know if you could put it on screen, but it's not in our packet, which is the list of items.
Yes. Thank you for, yes, go ahead.
Okay, and then the second thing is, what, what did you hear from neighbors on these phone calls?
Sure. So to answer your first question, Exhibit 6 is not included in the packet because it is a PDF document that is over 2,000 pages long. It is a full list of the items that they would be selling or may be selling at this location. So it was way too large of a file to provide. There is a link in your packet, though. If you click on that link, it should pull up the PDF.
It didn't work. Okay. I was hoping for a shortened list of more general items, but that's okay. So and the neighbors had said what on the phone?
Yes, so I had at least one neighbor call the office and talk about how to attend this meeting. And they said that they were against the petition. And I asked why they hadn't provided any support or opposition comments in the previous meetings. And they essentially stated that they did not want to attend a Zoom meeting. So now that some of the meetings are more in person, that they felt comfortable voicing that concern and wanted information on how to attend.
Okay, right, thank you so much. And Ms. Nestor Gilman has placed the link on the screen for the public, so thank you for that. Yeah, it's, it is very long. I was hoping for something like a summary statement as exhibit six, so. All right, so let's go ahead and hear from the petitioner or petitioner's representative first. Please state your name.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is John Kraft. I'm with the law firm of Young, Lynn, Anderson, Kraft in New Albany, Indiana. I did appear at all the meetings that Mr. Myers touched on, going back to November of two thousand twenty-one. That, of course, was the plat review committee. Plat review committee, as Mr. Myers indicated, came back with a four oh negative recommendation. Not to be defeated, we continued on. And certainly from that point on, we met with an administrative meeting in December. Subsequently, a regular meeting in December on December fourteenth. At that point in time, there was no vote taken. It was given and we were given an opportunity to give some additional information with regards to some of the packet items that Mr. Myers covered. We then appeared again and part of the discussion throughout this process was one, I think one of you commissioners have already made that comment about a grocery store. The reason why this was considered a grocery store was based upon a staff determination due to the size. If you looked at the convenience store size, it's three thousand seven hundred fifty square feet. This was going to be a over ten thousand square foot building. The result of that tended to be that's what the classification put it in was the GB. And by virtue of going general business as opposed to limited business, that caused some concerns. But one of the issues primarily with thirty-six, seven, three, six, oh, three, thirty-six, seven, four, six, oh, three on the rezoning primarily dealt with those five elements. And one of the items that we touched on, and there was a great deal of discussion, as Commissioner Thomas would know, being present at those meetings, but a great deal of discussion on the comprehensive plan. When the I sixty-nine corridor went through, a number of those properties that were on the one exhibit that Mr. Myers reflected were limited business. They were types of gas stations, other businesses that by virtue of the appropriation of that property by the state, those businesses were lost. The result of that tended to be there was then road improvement up to this property at Sample Road that actually was a split and it widened all the way to the end corner of this property. So it made it very appealable for a commercial development. And of course, one of the things that we dealt with and the PDF that was referred to, again, the question was, was is Dollar General really a grocery store? And Dollar General kind of accommodates itself to its surroundings. And one of the items that was discussed at the plan commission was what about fresh fruit, things of that nature? And Dollar General does have those. I live close to Lanesville, Indiana, and again, out in the country, the result tends to be the Dollar General close to me. They have fresh fruit. So again, they they kind of accommodate their surroundings. And in this instance, I think you'll find that you'll see this Dollar General to have those items. Again, some of the elements that were asked was what about septic? Because there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that deals with a commercial development having to be on sewers. So as Mr. Myers indicated, my client went out, had soil tested for purposes of making certain that this would accommodate a septic system. So they've gone to the nth degree to try to meet all of the requirements and the questions that have been posed. While Mr. Myers indicated he may have had some calls, it each of the plan commission meetings that we went to, there was only one individual by way of Zoom that appeared to speak, was not actually a neighbor, but spoke against it. Short of that, we had no opposition throughout that process. When we then examined thirty-six, seven, four, six, oh, three in those elements and the fact that the comprehensive plan had not taken into consideration the I sixty-nine corridor, it did not take into consideration those changes that were made when the appropriated real estate was taken by the state and some of those businesses were then shut down. So the result then tended to be, we agreed, and as Mr. Myers touched on as well, we agreed that we would allow that in the event that this was passed, rather than remaining GB, even though the site, because of its size, would probably not truly accommodate many GB type businesses. But we agreed that rather than staying all GB, that in the event Dollar General leaves this site, then the classification for purposes of any further use would be limited business. So again, it puts it back down into that lower category. And by doing that, it gives greater control to the county and the county plan commission to deal with those uses that would follow. If you've been around Dollar Generals, once they're there, they tend to stay. So I doubt seriously, you're probably going to see a situation where Dollar General is going to be leaving. But again, part of those written commitments dealt with the Dollar General, as long as it's there, it will remain a grocery store because of the classification and the size, but thereafter, any use would then be limited to a limited business. The other piece was dealing with signs. We agreed that on the sign situation, and again, these elements as to these conditions will all be placed of record, they will be recorded and enforceable by the county with regards to that. We're here this evening, normally my plan commission and commissioner meetings throughout are in the evening. But we're here this morning asking that having had a six to three favorable recommendation from the plan commission and due to the amount of time that they spent on it from November all the way up through February and what we continued to come back with and answer questions, when it came to you with a six, three positive recommendation, we would ask that you pass the ordinance. I do have with me this morning, I have Will McDonough, who is the engineer on the project. Also have Kurt Rafferty of Rafferty Development that will be doing the development of Dollar General in the event that there would be any questions, view commissioners of me, Mr. McDonough or Mr. Rafferty. Thank you very much for the opportunity, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on behalf of the petitioner? I appreciate we have folks here to answer questions, which is helpful. I'll start with Commissioner Giffens. Do you have questions for the petitioner?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, that was a very thorough explanation.
All right, so we will move on to public comments. And first, we will entertain commentary from folks who support this petition, if you would raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come up to the podium. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? If you would raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come up to the podium. It looks like we have Margaret Clements here, who is president of the plan commission. Good morning.
Oh, good morning. Thank you for your good coverage of this proposal. And also, I'd like to thank the petitioner for the amount of time that they have spent trying to secure approval for their idea for this property. That being said, I'd like to confirm that I am in opposition to this proposal. I support the staff's recommendation of denial and the plan review committee's recommendation of denial because it's not in keeping with the vision for this area. I think that this area is the gateway to southern Indiana. And just because there's a property nearby that is a limited business that really is in should be earmarked for redevelopment because it has been an abandoned gas station does not mean that this property nearby should be converted to general business. I think that that the proposal would amount to spot zoning and it's not like anything around it. We have gone through an extensive annexation remonstration process and the people in the surrounding areas have overwhelmingly stated that they want to keep the rural, rural. And this would go take the entire area in another direction than the vision held by the comprehensive plan, by the surrounding community, by our vision for gateway into our community. And I think that those are very strong reasons to deny this proposal. And with regard to grocery stores, this is a highly competitive grocery store market in Bloomington, Indiana. Some say it's one of the most competitive in the nation. We have, we're oversupplied with grocery stores, although there may not be one right at this location. It doesn't mean that we need one right at that location. And I think that we need to curate our vision for this sample road corridor that the public is investing in extensively with a, with a comprehensive vision for how we would like the entrance way to really southern Indiana, not just our community, but the community into a gateway vision for all of southern Indiana. And I think that we need to, we need to curate that and this is not in keeping with the comprehensive plan or the properties around it. And I thank you for listening to me and for hearing my objections to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clements. See if anyone else has a comment. Any general public comment on this item? Either here in the courthouse or via Zoom?
We have one telephone caller. I'm not sure if they are aware of the numbers or buttons to raise your hand. I think it's star nine is to raise your hand if you have a comment.
It's star nine to raise your hand, it's star six to mute and unmute. But I don't see that that's changing anything, okay. Thank you, Mr. Myers, I hadn't noticed that number. I would just say for me that as a member of the plan review committee and plan commission that I've been voting against this. I think, you know, a part of me wonders if I would have felt differently if it was somebody local trying to do something like a small farmer's market or something like that. And I think I would maybe feel differently about it because it would shit with the environment a bit more. I just, it is spot zoning and it is not in keeping with our comprehensive plan that has been approved through a long process. I just don't think that changing the environment on Sample Road is worth it for an out of state corporation. That is, you know, there's, there's really very limited benefit to Monroe County residents. I have not heard from anyone in that area who wants this, which is also telling. And it is, I think, disruptive to the, to that area. I appreciate, as Ms. Clements said, I appreciate the hard work that's gone into working through all of these details and considering things like the signage, which, which was very important as well. We certainly don't want to start putting poll signs up on the entryway into Monroe County. But this is an important part of our job and so I'm going to be voting no again. And I don't know if my colleagues have any other comments or statements they wish to make at this time.
I just am very much in agreement with Ms. Clements.
I'm not convinced that this is really a grocery store. If it were something more like Blooming Foods coming in, I would be much, much happier. And the size of it bothers me as well.
Yeah, yeah, if we're, if we're addressing a food desert issue, then it should be a food emporium of some sort. Yeah, I agree with you. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and call for a voice vote on ordinance twenty-two dash zero four. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. No, no. Motion fails zero three. That is our last agenda item. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today. Sorry, it didn't work out for you. That is our last agenda item. We don't have any appointments today. I have a couple of announcements, just a reminder that Earth Day is on Friday. So it's a good day to celebrate. Hopefully, it looks like the weather will be cooperating too. And we have some blood drives coming up, May fourth and fifth, May fourth, ten to three, May fifth, one to six at IV Tech. And go to redcross.org to sign up. We do have board and commission openings, including the board of zoning appeals. So if you're interested, go to co.munro.in.us and and look for the application for boards and commissions. I will note that the Community Voices for Health is involved in a community health improvement think tank. There's two events the community is welcome to attend and trying to reduce any barriers to attendance. Childcare will be provided, for example. The first event is Wednesday, April twenty-seventh from four to six at the Switchyard Park Pavilion. And the second event is April thirtieth, which is Saturday from one fifteen to three fifteen at the Banneker Center. I'm going to be serving as a facilitator, which will be fun. But it's going to be an opportunity for you to share your thoughts and ideas toward improving our community's health. And so your input is needed and we really encourage folks to attend. And my colleagues have anything else to add?
I would like to remind everybody that early voting is taking place right now. Yeah, Election Operations, which is at three oh two South Walnut Street. And for anyone who was, is wanting to vote absentee, you must have that application in by end of the day tomorrow. There is a deadline for applying for absentee ballots, but
Turned out by mail.
Absentee by mail, right.
Thank you.
But early in person, there will be early in person voting on Saturdays now, also from nine to four at that location. And the day prior to election, the, that will cut off at noon. So we do encourage people to get out and vote. That's the bedrock of our democracy.
It is indeed, thank you for that. And anything else?
No, I don't.
Okay, excellent, yes, everyone, please get out and vote. And with that, we are going to adjourn. Can we come back at eleven thirty for our work session? Is that okay with everyone? Excellent, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.